It is 7:31 PM. I'd like to call it the meeting to order and rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Motion came out of non-public.
Jim, do you want to do the -- I'll do this. Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion as the board just came out of a non-public session under RSA 91A3 to A through C, or I should say A, B, and C. I would like to make a motion to keep the minutes sealed until such time as the majority of the board thinks the circumstances no longer apply.
I second the motion.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? All right, our next item, fire rescue station sprinkler system update.
Good evening, Board. Mike Povero, construction manager. You should have a breakdown of the sprinkler quotes there.
We do.
Everybody on the same sheet of music?
Yep.
Any questions regarding that? Were we at the total or items?
Yeah, I mean, they're not far off from what you kind of told us verbally, I think, the last one.
Yeah, so then I think it was around a few thousand dollars of what I quoted you a while ago and--
So it seems like the pump is the killer.
Oh, yeah. It always had-- it was the 800-pound gorilla in the room from the beginning.
So Breen and Sullivan is the actual pump?
No, Breen and Sullivan is the mechanical contractor.
So they're doing--
There's a copy-- you should have a copy of his proposal.
Yeah, it's right here.
Okay, so it includes the pump, though?
Correct.
That's what I thought--
I have another copy of his proposal. Do you need it?
No, I'm looking at--
Oh, you see it there?
Yeah, I'm looking at it.
Okay.
And I'm just saying, it-- because it was the highest number, I'm like, that must include the pump, right?
Oh, yeah. No, that's the pump, the diesel pump, the mechanical aspect of this project.
So the-- Kim, the bookkeeper, made us a spreadsheet last time. I don't see it in here. I was looking at it this morning, so I know it's around somewhere. But basically, what I asked the bookkeeper to do was basically give us-- and it's always that you guys can-- it's always going to be a picture in time, right? Because there's always stuff coming in, coming out, never going in, unfortunately. But basically, I asked her to kind of pick off the books where we could find the money for this. So we're looking at about 200 and change left in the bond, and then we have roughly 4,300 in interest on the bond, and then we have 36 and change general government and buildings line item, and then we have 36 and change from the, I always call it, the rental income account, so 8 Merrimack Road. So if I'm looking at this, the good news is we can use existing funds to pay for the work for this. So this is about 236 for this sub-project, right, that you've--
Yeah, 230, stacks and change, yeah.
So if we were to take what's left in the bond, that's 200, and then we take 36 out of the 8 Merrimack Road account, that covers that. The only thing left after this would be your fee as the construction manager, which is, what is that, 2.9%?
2.9%.
So we would just have to find the 2.9 and-- but I think we have the existing funds to support all of this.
So do you have the updated sheet from today for the, it's account balance, various account balances?
It's in that folder.
That's the one I just gave you.
The one that-- There's an updated one that has from May 1st.
Oh, first?
Yeah.
So it's probably gone down a little bit, right?
A little bit, probably, yeah.
Because of the invoices?
Yes. You'd see there on either share point or share, the various account balances?
Yep.
Okay.
So and the 2.9 would be calculated against the final bill, right?
Yeah, at the end of the-- in that number that you have that scope of work breakdown, you'll see that there's a 2.9% line item in there.
Okay, that's what I thought I saw that on there.
Yeah, so this covers the construction manager's fee as well, this estimate.
For that, because that was all above and beyond the original scope.
For the sub-project.
But the big project, that you've already been paid for, right?
No, I have not.
No, so that's still--
I have taken no funds on this project.
So your fee still needs to come out of here for the full project?
That is correct.
Okay, so it might be built in here, but it hasn't actually been expended for the whole project?
Not at all.
And we have to keep that in mind?
Yeah, exactly. That's what I'm saying. So we have to find that somewhere in there, and then, as I said in the last meeting, whatever we deplete with a warrant article after the sale of the fire station, we can, you know, with the warrant article language, we could move money to back up whatever we depleted, if we have to deplete from a, another source. You know what I'm saying? If we wanted to, if we wanted to give back to the 8 Merrimack Road account or something like that.
Oh, yeah, the city will develop.
So that's my, you know, my main thing is, is the people won't have to dip back into their pockets unless I'm--
Thank goodness.
Unless my numbers are-- and it's very, it's rough now.
Yeah, the concern is, you know, we do still have to pay the GM for the work.
Right.
I mean, right, we can justify and cover the cost of the sprinkler, but the board's going to need to do some major pencil shrapneling to make sure that we can cover all of the town's debts.
What's the timeline looking like for this work?
I have a meeting scheduled Friday with the three major players, architect, engineer, and sprinkler contractor, because sadly, as I stand here at this podium, I do not have a finished set of drawings from the team. So as soon as I have that, then I could give you a better timeframe and start ordering equipment. I mean, I think in Breen and Sullivan's quote there, I think it's a 10-week. I don't have that one in front of me, but I think it's a 10-week lead time for the fire pump.
So as we stand here, we're not concerned about our deadline?
No, I've been concerned about the deadline for three months.
Right, but--
There's only so much I can do about it.
Well, we're always concerned about the deadline, but you're not.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's a target somehow we need to achieve. And not at this, I mean, you can, if you choose to, I don't think we need to waste our time at this meeting, but there was an additional proposal that I got, Diane has a copy of it right there, that was a complete-built pump station. We looked at that one to see if it would expedite the timeframe, that's why I bring it up right now, and/or cost. No, it blows the cost out of the water. It's not even--
Really?
Huh?
Really, I'm surprised it's, if it's pre-built, it's not cheaper.
Do you have that copy with you, Diane?
Yeah.
Can I see that?
That's just the pump--
Yeah, right, right.
That number is just the pump house. You've still got to put the tanks in, connect it to the building. To sum it up, it would put you north of $315,000.
Yeah.
To go that way.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's just say it's $100,000 more than--
Yeah, you can round it out for simplicity's sake, but it wasn't even remotely close.
Yeah.
Believe me, I was hoping it was going to be. Even if it was 10 grand, we'd go that route to speed it up and be done, because I really don't want to spend a lot of time up there.
All right, so I'm assuming that you cannot take action until the board tells you to move forward with this, to expend this funds, right?
Unless I misunderstood, when we were at a prior selectman's meeting, I thought you gave the nod on that already.
Yeah, I think we did.
Yeah, did we set an amount?
Yeah, it wasn't, I don't think it was that. You might have to revise the total amount. I think at the last meeting it was--
226, I think.
Yeah, something like that. But I did that with best numbers I had at the time, not hard quotes.
Yeah, so we will need--
Madam Chair, I will authorize the general manager to expend up to $236,248.84 for the completion of the sprinkler system at the fire station.
So I'll second for discussion, and I'm having deja vu. I think I said the same thing last time. This is all covered under the original agreement. The, you know, the scope of work, it's different than what we came out, but in order to finish the project, we need this done. So I still want to manage everything like the original agreement, but if we need some sort of head nod from the board to say, you just showed us this quote and we're in favor of the quote, that's fine, but I don't think we need a motion to expend the funds, because that's already been agreed to in the contract.
I realize this, however, it's always best to have something from the board as backup.
Yep, that's fine. No biggie.
All right, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Can we have a motion to sign the, what do we call that? The invoice, the quote, the--
Move to have the chair sign the--
On the sign, the signature, I just spoke with that guy over there.
That guy over there?
And he said not to sign it at this point, but maybe to authorize the chair to sign as needed?
I will move to authorize the chair to sign the contract with Ms. Breen and Sullivan when proper.
When ready, yeah, okay.
The non-pre-pack one. There's going to be two from them. Correct, this is the one that falls within the dollar amount that we were. Okay, so do we have a second?
I would, yeah.
Matt's the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so we won't sign it at the moment. Next item. I think that's all we have for you, right?
He did the sinkholes at Greenie.
He's got the sinkholes at Greenie?
He did, he did the work, so.
I'll take care of that.
Oh, okay.
When you're ready.
Okay. Let's see, so, yeah, let's go to that one so we can get, let him go, so, and he's getting ready to go, so.
Just before you leave. So on the sinkhole--
We're off the fire station discussion, on to the next one.
Fire was with us.
So we are on discussion about Greenie Park.
Okay, so I was informed about two weeks ago, just before the openings day for baseball, that there were problems at the park, Greenie Park, in the field, and it ended up there was a very large sinkhole. And to make a long story short, the, we think it was stumps that had been buried, and they're all deteriorating at the same time. So in order to get this going, Mike volunteered, and he gave us the loom to fill all the holes, and I think there ended up being over 10 of them.
Yeah, it was 10 or 11.
10, so quite a few, and the highway crew went out and laid the loom down, so I'd like to say thank you to them for getting that all done in a very quick and timely fashion.
Well, I second the gratitude.
I don't think there was a motion of gratitude on me.
But I can still second it.
I was just going to say--
I would motion to have gratitude for this, because it was a good thing.
Well, listen, I appreciate the sentiment, but we don't need any thanks. We work with all the departments. Baseball's a big deal. It's a great thing for the town, so I'm usually down there helping those guys.
Yeah, but you hear the bad things, you know, when people aren't happy.
Really?
You should also--
In the winter, does anyone ever--
Never. I have no idea what you guys are going through right now.
So I want you to know that you are appreciated. Thank you.
Well, and I appreciate that, and it's just us, not me, it's the highway crew too. You know, they, those guys do a good job.
And they do it under your direction.
Yeah, but they, you know, they, they don't get enough credit, let's put it that way. They get a lot of bad press, too, so, but it's, I think it goes with the territory, unfortunately.
And from what I've heard, the road crew did an excellent job at Greenie Park, so we do appreciate their efforts as well.
Yep.
No problem.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
All right, so we have a, do we have a spreadsheet on the hazardous waste bids?
Yes, it's called 2019 Haz Day Comparison.
What's it called?
Haz Day, 2019 Haz Day.
And to inform the public, we did receive three, and we--
Three what?
Three proposals, bids.
Two.
Didn't we receive three?
I think you only got two.
Two. We received two?
Two.
Two?
Right.
And we opened two. All right, I was seeing double.
Do last year's company that we used, were they one of these?
Yes.
Because I did get a lot of positive feedback from people about the company we used last year, just for the record.
And that feedback was positive, negative, ambivalent?
Positive.
Okay.
I said positive.
Which one was?
That was Care Environmental.
Oh, okay.
All right, so we have, we have flat, all right, I hate it when it's per hour versus--
Yeah, it's, I'm a fan of apples to apples.
So how many hours did Care actually plan for this, or did we tell them how many hours we wanted them there for?
It's his--
It's his thing, huh?
Spreadsheet, so let him--
Oh, it's Pete's spreadsheet.
Five people, four hours.
I thought it was your spreadsheet.
Pete Gagnon, transfer station. The event itself will go on for three hours, but there's also setup and then take-down, loading up, everything, so I think that's all based on four hours.
And four hours for one person, or how many people?
It's based on five people at four hours, and that's for both of the--
All right, so four hours per person is $200, times five people is $1,000. So that tells us it's $1,000, $1,000. So that's apples to apples as far as the labor is concerned.
Well, just so you understand, we're assuming five people, so if they bring six people, it'll be more.
Right. But it gives us a general idea, so we can say, you know--
Exactly.
Estimated five people, $1,000.
Yeah.
Okay. Aerosol cans--
He did total it up down at the bottom for you.
Cubic yard box, yes, but is that, oh, yeah, concludes setup and labor based on five people at four hours, which is good.
The only difference between the two is that Care Environmental doesn't appear to be taking latex paint.
It's, they actually, it's the same price, so I just--
Oil and latex is--
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I believe--
That carrots, think of it as the double quotes twice.
Oh, okay.
The repeat.
Okay.
Save time, you know.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, if we think of them as the double quotes, we're no, they're a repeat of the value above.
Right. So the only thing is the NA, which is for inorganic basis.
Yeah, which on Care Environmental's proposal, they didn't have inorganic bases, and I contacted them, and it's actually the, where is it here? The corrosives is what it's considered. So the corrosives is actually right above the NA.
I was just going to say--
Yeah, I was unsure, so I called them directly and figured that out.
Can I, can I just interject here and say, the biggest difference between these two companies is that Tri-Bed or Trade B charges you 12.9% fee additional.
An environmental assessment fee.
Yes, and Care Environmental does not.
Now, what exactly is inorganic basis?
It's corrosives. That's the corrosives?
Yeah.
And acids.
Give me an example.
Solids, liquids, like--
Corrosives, pink thinner, things like that.
Corrosive sublimate, nitric acid, sulfuric acid.
Well, we have corrosives and acids, that's a line item, and then we have inorganic basis as a separate line item.
They do the same thing.
There are--
Trade B had them itemized in that way. That's why Care Environmental, they didn't have inorganic basis as a separate item, they just had it in with corrosives and acids.
So it's in with?
Yes.
So it needed the double quotes as well?
Yeah, well, yeah, I was just giving you what--
It says N/A, which means not available or not applicable.
Yeah.
Which would tell me that, okay, Trade B is offering to take inorganic basis and Care is not, and that's why I was asking for the clarification.
They didn't word it as inorganic basis. Care Environmental didn't. That's why I put the NA there, and they consider that as corrosives, where Trade B considers them different, I guess. I don't know why they do that.
Okay, now, I see 1.03.00 per pound. Is that supposed to be $1.03 per pound or $103 per pound?
$1.03 per pound.
Okay, so no dots or zeros.
Yeah, I don't know why that's there.
Certain things that are on here, we normally take like used oil.
Yeah, and, but if we have any used oil that's contaminated, we don't take it.
Right.
So they would be able to bring that during this, and that's why I left that on.
Well, I was just going to say, we take it because we actually have a use for it, don't we?
We actually have to pay to get rid of it, but it's not as much as--
We pay to get rid of it?
We used to get paid for it, not anymore, for the last, what, couple of years?
Yeah, I think--
Well, that's what I was going to say, is I thought we, at one point, we were getting paid for it.
We were, yep.
Because it'd be nice if there was somebody sort of near the gate, anything that the town could make some money on, rather than paying somebody else to take it. Well, but hearing that, I'll move that we award the hazardous waste day pickup and remove to Care Environmental Corp.
I'll second for discussion. Did either of them give an idea of their availabilities or what dates that they would suggest to actually do this?
No, there was nothing in the--
Yeah, I did, I got that.
Okay.
She's on top of it.
There, I was thinking November 4th, I believe, right, is a Saturday? Is that correct? Let me just check.
They can't do it sooner, it might be snowing by then.
We had said to do it in October, November, so that's what the RFP said, so that's what I stuck with.
Okay. So they said November, now, did they both say November 4th or--
No, it's not November 4th, okay, so let me find my spreadsheet here, give me a minute, but they did give us some days in November that they are available.
Okay. And they are days that work for us?
Yes, well, we didn't have anything that didn't work for us, basically. They, I always, I just told them on Saturday.
It always fills up quick, their calendar, anyway.
Yeah, exactly, that's why I'm asking.
But we got to get it in, yeah.
So, did they--
All right, but you said it does work for our calendar, so we can, any other discussion about the Care bid? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
That's unanimous. And I'd like us to try to fix the date so that we can--
Start advertising it ASAP.
Exactly.
November 2nd, they are available, and that's the first Saturday of the month of November. You want to do, is November 2nd good for you, Pete?
Yes.
Now, they, and they did not have any Octobers, right?
No, they didn't have October.
Is there a Saturday or a Sunday?
That's a Saturday.
Saturday.
November 2nd works for me.
Okay.
What time are we looking at?
9:02, 9:12, right?
9:12.
Yeah, they'll be there earlier to set up and stuff.
Right.
You're saying November 2.
11:02, yes. All right, I don't think we need a motion for that, right?
No, we can ask Diana, she'll, as soon as we have a confirmation, she'll stop putting it on the website.
Yeah.
And there's nothing to sign in order to get them to--
No, not--
--time, and, okay, perfect.
I don't believe so.
Then yes, please contact them and--
He has the, can you just check to see if there's something from Care? You have the brochures, right, the things that-- I didn't see anything, but I was kind of looking at other things.
What is it?
Yeah, I'll just take the Care one. I don't think there's anything in here for you to sign. I believe, if I recall from the last time, it came after, and we had to sign something.
Okay.
So maybe make a motion to have the--
Move to have the chair sign any contract with, I close the thing.
Care Environmental.
Care Environmental, when the document arrives.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, that covers that. And then our next item is Town Beach Landscape Maintenance Quote.
Thank you.
So basically, where this comes from, if you look at the quote, this is our current landscaper.
Yeah, look at that.
The scope is, and we're probably going to be able to knock off the spring cleanup, because we're going to try to get the Sheriff's Department prisoners to do that, but we'd like to see if we could add a bi-weekly maintenance to mow the grass areas, trim around buildings and fences, obstacles, and blow debris off. So Jim's going to be a no, but just wanted to see if the board would support adding it. We've never done it before, so if you say no, we'll just, we'll deal with it, but it was just an idea.
What happens if you do it just weekly? Bi-weekly, it's twice a week, right?
Well, bi-weekly means every two weeks.
No, it means every other--
Oh, okay, that makes a lot more sense then.
Yeah, I always get that--
It's like, really, twice a week?
So every two weeks.
I get that one confused, too. Because it's bi-weekly and it's like bimonthly, I think is, it should--
Bimonthly is every other month.
Yeah, right, right, so I don't know.
Semi-monthly.
Every two weeks, we want to do--
Semi-monthly or bi-weekly?
What was it previously?
Previously, we've never done the Town Beach.
No, but don't we have the, yeah, the custodian actually goes down and does some of the cleanup.
And I think he may have actually gotten to it and done a lot of the cleanup already at the beach, so you may not need anybody to go down there to clean up.
Yeah, we will be getting, we want to get the prisoners, because of the sand, we're going to be putting down.
Okay.
So it's going to be one of those things, if we get them for the day, we'll just have a list, you know?
Okay, just--
I'm just, I'm going to throw this out there, forgive me, but I've been to the Town Beach many times. Where's their grass?
I don't go there that often, but there is some grass, but it's not, it's not like a, I'd go frontline-type grass, it's like around the--
It's around the edges.
It's like around the parking lot.
Near the picnic tables and around the edges of the parking lot.
Yeah, it's over to the right as you're going down to the beach. There isn't much grass there.
There really isn't.
But it does get high towards the end of the year.
What was done before this was once a month of mowing?
Once a year, if we're lucky, we'd get scouts to come down there and do some stuff and clean it up.
Just mowing, I'm just talking about the mowing.
Uh, no mowing.
No, we don't.
Never been maintained.
Never been mowing, to my knowledge.
For example, my yard, he will come once a month, twice a month, in different seasons of when grass grows. I don't know if we, to me, this, I don't even get my own lawn done this frequently.
So this is, would be, Diane, correct me if I'm wrong, this would be the same schedule as the rest of the town. You'd just be adding the Town Beach.
That's correct.
So the entire town is on this schedule.
I could throw, always throw my argument that if the board goes ahead and adds this, we're even more into the price range of, we could probably have a full-time town employee for what we're spending on these things.
Yeah, I know, so, like I said, we've, we've had this argument a few times this year. So I'm, I'm just throwing it out there, if the board's supportive, great, if not, we'll, we'll, we'll make do, but it was just an idea.
All right, so is there any kind of motion for this?
So, yeah, I'll move to add biweekly lawn maintenance of the Town Beach to our existing landscape contract.
The funds coming to come from?
General government, where does landscape come out of?
Well, that's where it would come from, but it's being used, so just letting you know.
All right, so I'm gonna rescind my motion, so.
You gotta rescind that?
Yeah, I'm gonna rescind my motion, but I would like to, when it gets to budget season.
Try to put it in for next year?
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, all right. Okay, so we will move on to our next item, which is Town Properties Update, Two Amesbury Road and Central Fire Station.
So basically, those, for the Two Amesbury Road, the 30 days is up, they have, we have not heard back from them, so we can move forward with auctioning off the property.
All right. And what does the auctioneer require of us to do so?
Nothing. I just need to let them know and just, just an informational for you people to know.
All right, because we've already given the authorization to move forward with it, so just keep us updated on that, so great, we're moving forward with the auction.
It'd be nice if we have, that's going to fall at least far enough in the future so that we can get plenty of.
Advertising?
Yeah.
Well, I'm sure the auctioneer also does his advertising, but.
They do that, yeah, they do all that.
However, it would be great if we could get the auction date ourselves as well, so that we can post it on the town website and, you know, make it part of the email blast, et cetera. Because I have heard from people in the past where, oh, I didn't know that was up for sale. So it, just getting the information out there, that way there's no surprises.
I believe they will send all that to us.
Okay, excellent.
So we're doing the fire station as well?
Well, I think with the fire station, right, that's an entirely different conversation, because I think we need to put out a, basically an RFP for a real estate broker. Am I correct in assuming that? Because the fire station, we own free and clear.
Right.
Yeah, but we can still auction it.
Right, do we want to auction it or do we want to list it?
Before we, before we either auction it, we need to find out what its actual value is.
And that's what a broker could do, right?
Yeah.
Or, so what I'd like to see is something on our website, I don't think we need to go much further than that, on our website inviting brokers to apply essentially.
I think what I was told is it's $400 to $500 to give us that information, I believe, and we don't want to spend money to try and sell it, right?
Well.
Well, it's gonna cost money to sell it, I mean.
Exactly, yeah.
If you've got three or four different people coming in and giving you a price, I don't want.
We're not paying three or four different people $400 bucks, no.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Well, this, what I'm saying is, I'm saying, if brokers, if you want to work with us, then let's, why don't you apply? We can review, you know, letters of interest or whatever, and then we pick one, and then we, we, we pay that one the $400.
Okay.
But I'm not paying.
Well, actually, they would get a percentage, because it's a standard listing. So brokers, if you want, swing by the Central Fire Station, take a look at it and give us a proposal. Saying, yes, for X percent brokerage fee, we will sell this building for this amount of money. And then we can, then we can look at and review and say, okay, these people think for 10%, they can sell it for $399,000, or for 2%, these people could say they can sell it for $299,000, and we'll be able to compare things.
So, so I'd just make a motion to, to advertise a request for letters of interest for brokers to sell the Central Fire Station.
Second.
Any other discussion?
We talk in newspaper or?
No, I don't think so. Not at this point.
Oh, trust me, I'm sure the, there are quite a number of real estate agents in town who probably will look on the website and what have you.
It's a commercial building, though, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
Zoned, yeah.
So I mean, it's different, I mean, not.
I don't think it's in the Village District.
Different brokers for different things, okay.
Yeah, I think it is.
Commercial zone.
But it is, it is a commercial.
All right, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
So, I mean, if you need help with wording on this, I would just, you know, if you Google, I'm sure you'll find something, because I've never done it either, but I'm sure that was going to be the next question. The, basically, if, if I'm a broker, which actually I am, not in New Hampshire, but I've never brokered any real estate, but I happen to be able to do it. But what I'd be doing is if I saw that, I'd just write a letter and I'd basically say to the Newton Board of Selectmen, this is what I can do for you, this is my experience. And I'll, that's, that's, I think, what we're all looking for, is that, that sort of information from, from some, from several people that we can go through and go from there.
All right, our next item is roofing quotes, Library, Marshall House and Barn.
So you have the quotes there?
Well, I actually have a question first, because I noticed right after that is a floor and quote for the library bathroom floor. Were these items requested to be put into the budget for this budget season?
No, I think the historical buildings was brought to our attention, so Diane started checking it out and getting quotes and stuff because of the, we don't want the building to get all wet inside.
And the library lost some roofing shingles.
Okay, so.
For repairs, right?
Well, what two roofers told the library director was that the shingles up there are like potato chips. So you might get them repaired, but chances are it'll leak.
Is that on the library?
That's on the library. There's already two to three layers on some areas.
All right, and?
And no, we did not budget for these.
And that's one of the reasons why I'm mentioning it, because we're already talking about taking money from government buildings for the sprinkler system. This is more expenses that we haven't planned for.
Right.
This is what I was saying earlier, is if we sell the fire station, this is what we could, I mean, it'll take us a few months to, to have it on the warrant and stuff, but this is what we could end up subsidizing with that money.
Not exactly, because that's this year, warrant article is next year, the damage is already done.
Yeah, well, no, this is what I'm saying, is we can't do it this year.
Right.
We have.
Unless there's something that's of the emergency variety, then I don't think we can support.
Like patching, now or whatever.
The library repair might, wouldn't that be somewhat of an emergency, is it leaking now?
No.
I don't think so. The problem with the library, if it leaks a little, you're losing books, they don't do well with water.
Yeah, I mean, we could, we could support Band-Aids, I think, so.
It would prevent damage until we had the money, it would be worth it. What's, so what's happening with Marshall House and Barn? Obviously, they need roofs, but are they leaking now?
Well, if you saw those roofs, they're really bad.
Like, okay.
Than this.
So we definitely need to get those in the budget at some point soon.
So what about the, the trust fund there that we were talking about?
Like this store? Oh, I think it's on the list already for the sprinklers, so I don't know.
What trust fund?
The general town buildings capital reserve.
Yeah, the Eight Merrimack Road, et cetera, that's what.
Not the Eight Merrimack Road, it's.
The town buildings.
And the other one, yes. Based on what we were looking at, so there's the general government buildings improvement and Eight Merrimack Road, and then the town buildings capital reserve.
That's the one, yeah.
All right. And we have the sprinkler system and the construction manager, 2.9%, that needs to be paid.
That's the problem.
That's the problem.
So what do you want to do with these buildings, then?
So basically, I, we have a deadline, right, to have the pump house up and running by the, was it August 31st or August 15th?
Correct, August 31st.
So I think, once that's functional, working and paid for, then we can start looking at other things. So we could, you know, come back in September or whatever, at a meeting and start looking at what still needs to be done.
Unless the situation gets dire.
Quite honestly, some, some of these, library roof replacement has me the most concerned. Marshall House and the Marshall House Barn are to me second, second tier items. However, we are, we did tonight say that we are going to auction off the.
PD?
The old PD on Amesbury Road. That's, that would be unanticipated revenue, however, we.
That you only get, you can only keep what you put into the building?
Right.
So you're just paying yourself back?
Right. However, it's unanticipated revenue, so normally we would not be able to spend it this year. However, we can petition the Commissioner of the Department of Revenue Administration to expend that as an emergency, because quite honestly, water and books do not mix.
So that's cool, if that, if we can do that, like that.
That, to me, makes more sense than waiting until such time as we have the fire station sold, because we have a broker for that. It could sell in two weeks, it could sell in three months.
Yeah, but I don't even think we'll get enough for, and not based on these quotes.
So I don't think we'll get enough.
Well, right, I mean.
We have to.
Can you give us a minute, one second?
Is it unanticipated revenue if it's paying our tax bill back?
No.
Marshall's historic, right?
Unanticipated revenue.
Yes.
Because we don't have to do it this year.
Look at what?
Grants. Have they looked at any grants for the historical properties?
We, you, we own the buildings.
Oh, I thought the historical side, okay.
We own them, the historical uses the, okay, the museum. My understanding is you can't expend monies that, from selling the fire station. You can ask the Commissioner to take it from the general fund, this would just go into the general fund.
Yeah, there's a process, but we have to actually go.
Because it's unanticipated revenue, we've got extra revenue in the general fund.
Yeah, and what Diane's got a total on what we may get back, which is about $48,000, that's it.
That's Two Amesbury Road.
However, 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 all of that $48,000 is not necessarily what we get to keep.
It's what we've got for expenses, taxes, expenses and the whole like.
It is, okay.
So if.
That's if it's else, but what we think it's gonna be.
Somebody bids $50,000, we keep the first 48 and probably some change.
We probably keep less than that because you have to pay the auctioneer.
Commission, commission, yeah.
So you will get some of it back. So we want to at least recoup, we need, in order to, you have to recoup over $48,000, even more than 50, because you have to pay the auctioneer.
Well, I was just gonna say, there's a break even point, it may be $51,000, where, okay, the auctioneer has paid, we get our 48. It isn't until those two fees have been paid off that a penny goes back to the previous owner.
Exactly.
All right, how do we go back? We're going backwards here, we're back on E, let's get back to roofing quotes.
Well, the reason I was saying that is.
We're counting chickens before they hatch.
If it becomes an emergency, he's saying we can go to the Commissioner.
But, but again, it also assumes that we're able to sell it, we're able to sell it within the next few months, we're able to get, there's a lot of assumptions here.
Exactly.
So I, I don't think we can even, at this point, make a decision as to whether or not we're going to be able to do it or with what funds.
Again, my suggestion is you don't even care about what you're selling, you cannot spend that money, because you don't have permission to be able to spend that money. We have money in the fund balance, if you're gonna take any money out, you take it from there. Don't worry about the buildings and what we get and what we don't get, because you can't touch that money.
Right, I realize that. I'm still not prepared to be spending this amount of money unplanned unless we actually, I mean, do they have buckets with water dripping in from, when it rains, or?
My understanding of the library is there's stains on the upstairs in the attic. It probably leaked a long time ago, before we fixed it the last time. Doesn't mean it's wet now.
Well, that's what I was asking.
But there's a couple of shingles that have blown off from the wind. But like Diane said, there's two layers of shingles on there. We're not seeing water damage at this point.
Yeah, I mean.
But we're trying to be proactive.
I still go back to, I want to talk about this in September, unless.
Right.
Like Lisa said, it's, it's, it's an imminent threat, you know?
I agree, and I don't feel it is an imminent threat right now. I don't know about the Marshall building, but the library, I don't think is.
So the impact of missing shingles right now will not create a bigger leak?
There's two, two layers on there already, and last time Tony was in there, which was a couple of months ago, there was no signs of water damage as far as.
Oh, okay.
New water stains.
Okay, the, I read through all this and I was under the impression that we actually had water damage.
No, I think we're just trying to be proactive.
Oh, okay.
Okay, and same thing with Marshall House and Barn, that's being proactive?
That one, I'm not sure.
That one is really in rough shape.
I, I would think the house where all the artifacts are would be more important than the barn.
Right, but again.
Well, exactly.
Is there an immediate need, as in, do they have buckets catching drips of water or?
It's in there when it's raining.
It could be patches.
What was that?
Nobody's in there.
When it's raining, because it's too scary.
It's too scary when they're raining?
Yeah, when it's raining in there, yeah, oh yeah, no lights, no, no.
Yeah, true.
I'm just not there, has someone gone in with the moisture meter, just see if there are leaks in the Marshall House and Barn?
It, the roof is really bad. I, I mean, you look at it, it's really bad. You want to wait till September, I'd say, fine, let's wait till September.
Okay, I'm just not hearing.
We've had a lot of rain this year.
Right, if we had a huge budget, this wouldn't be an issue.
Right, exactly.
Because the sprinkler issue, it's an issue.
These are things that came up that we, we're not aware of.
Yeah, if anything comes up, or the moisture meter's showing mold or any of these problems that we don't have happen.
Oh, that's way beyond on the Marshall House, don't worry about that.
Okay, then we should know.
So is it anything that can be patched at this point?
No, no, the whole, that whole, the side that gets the sun is just really bad.
All right, but it is something we can postpone for right now, right?
To be considered.
If I could complicate our lives for a minute here, because I'm, I'm starting to think here, and this is returning to kind of a previous topic still related. If we, if we auction off the PD, let's say, in a month, okay? We currently have a landscape contract that includes the, the old PD, right?
Yep.
So can we take, we'll have a whole season, can we use, you'll have to ask the landscaper, but can they honor that portion of the landscape contract at Greenie Park, since we're gonna be paying it anyway?
At Greenie Park?
You mean at Town Beach?
Town, I'm sorry, Town Beach.
How did that come out of the roofing?
Because we're talking about auctioning the PD, and I immediately thought of our previous topic, that we've already signed up to get the grass cut over there, because that was one of our expenses we can recoup, right, from the auction, so.
Yeah, I don't think we paid that much at the 2 Amesbury Road, though.
I don't have it, yeah.
Just if you don't mind asking the question, the difference might be, as you're saying, it might be a lot different, maybe it's, it's not, but just thank you.
So that's something to get info and let us know. All right, so we are going to postpone roofing, the library flooring?
The flooring, we promised them that we would do that this year. $1,300, maybe $220.
So that is an expected repair?
We kind of anticipated this in that amount of money that we had budgeted, yes.
All right.
I, I don't know. I think this price might be a little bit high. I don't know.
Well, one thing, on the safety committee, this, this subject was brought up, and we went down and looked at what the problem was, and we couldn't find the problem.
It's curling, and I'm told that they would have to take all that flooring off and maybe replace the floor wood or something.
Well, we went down, it was a, right along the very edge where the, where the cove molding is, there was a little bit of curling that happens with vinyl sheet goods.
I, I think it's a little bit worse, but we assured them last year that we would get somebody in there to fix it.
And what they have is quotes to replace it?
I think this is a little bit expensive, but that's, what do I know?
Is this all there is?
Yeah, I, I'm not sure why, there's two.
There's two, okay, I gotta find the other one. So Team Handyman's $1,300, and Rugs, Rolls &amp; More is $855.
Right, that's the two.
Okay.
And I think there was a, a quote on Team Handyman, I'm not sure, where they have to lift the toilet up. Jim and I, we talked about it. You don't need to move the toilet to put the flooring down, right? You can cut around it or whatever, because you wouldn't put it under.
In order to do it properly, you do have to lift the toilet. It's annoying that it does cost $200, but they actually, in doing that, they have to actually drain it.
But do they have to do that for a little tiny bathroom?
Trust me, as somebody who once did trim the around, it, it's not worth how horrible it looks.
It'll just curl.
It's for the seal, and the other thing is, you're not gonna have that curl, because they're not talking about linoleum, which is what they currently have. They're talking about putting down vinyl tile.
I don't know. It's up to you guys. I, I don't know. I don't know.
So what do they, okay, so this is in the budget? This is gonna, right now?
We weren't sure what the price was gonna be, but we estimated, I think, $800 or something.
And this is for vinyl flooring?
Vinyl tile flooring.
Well, is it gonna be vinyl tile or vinyl sheet goods?
The quotes are for vinyl tiles.
Is that because it's the most economical?
I was just gonna say, I, I haven't seen the, the, I just saw the...
No, I found them. Where did I, where did I see them?
And the library flooring quotes, there's a folder?
Yeah, see, there we go.
Well, I thought it was just there.
Yep, library flooring quotes, folder.
Folder?
I put the quotes in there.
Yeah, I knew, I saw them.
Oh, there we go, it's on the very top.
I saw them when I was online. Now, I, I find it interesting that Rugs, Rolls &amp; More is charging a freight charge.
They're, they're less, though.
Well, I know they're less, but then that's...
Considering the difference in prices, I'm guessing that they're basically doing it for us for cost.
Yeah, and they're also including subfloor in their quote, whereas I did not see that in the Team Handyman quote. So while Rugs &amp; More may need a plumber to come in and do that piece, the two quotes together is still less than Team Handyman.
What's a vinyl cove base versus vinyl tile? Is it the same thing?
It is. No, the cove base is like the four-inch baseboard, if you will, the one that they put around the edge.
Is pro-ethereal cloud dance? What the heck is that? Is that the material?
That's a style.
A style, a tile?
Yeah, it, it, it's, you know, like Cobalt Blue or Under the Sea, or...
It certainly sounds pretty than the other quote.
But what I like is, Team Handyman is quoting the luxury vinyl tile flooring. It's like, do we really need luxury in a small bathroom?
How we roll.
So this is a floor for a small bathroom?
Yeah, and what I'm not seeing on the Team Handyman is the subfloor or underlayment.
What's that? Yeah, the, I lost several minutes of my life talking about this floor earlier in the year, was it? So I'm kind of like staying out of it.
Madam Chair, I would move that we award the contract for the floor, re-floring of the bathroom at the library to... Just have to wait until...
Rugs, Rolls &amp; More.
Thank you, yes, Rugs, Rolls &amp; More.
And Norman Barubi, the plumbing, are you gonna make that separate? Because they kind of go hand in hand?
I'll, I'll make it all-inclusive.
All right, and for the total amount of...
Wait, is there heat, I'm sorry, is there heat in this bathroom?
Wait a second. For the total amount of $855.
All right, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, so Matt seconded. Whether there's heat in the library bathroom or not, we still need...
Oh, no, I'm just saying the baseboard isn't obviously overheating, as they know. They've seen it at the job.
Yeah, they...
The library is just as old as.
Get in radiant heat, and I'll, I'll agree.
All right, so any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that's unanimous. Next, RFP for IT support. I know Diane has sent it out to all of the departments, looking for some feedback, to see if there was anything that might be missing.
Can I just throw in one thing for the minutes, that that come out of general government buildings budget?
Yes, we were talking about that whole thing, so that was the intent of the board.
All right, just wanted to make sure, because that's important.
All right, so RFP IT. I know you sent it out to the different departments.
Yep, we'll get it back, and the, it's, what's included there now is the specs for the police department as well.
Excellent.
So is it okay to send out?
Please.
Yes. Anybody have any issues with the RFP as written?
Nope.
Nope. All right, I don't think we need a motion to tell you to go ahead and send her out. All right, next item. I guess his lease is up again, our tenant at 8 Merrimack Road. We have a 2019 lease.
I mean, my thing is, I'd like to just renew, as, and for those watching at home, the reason we have to talk about this every year is for us to go at least longer than a year. It'd have to be a warrant article every year, which just simply wouldn't be doable. So I'd like to extend this lease for another year. So I would move to, to sign and then offer a one-year lease to, and it's, what are they called?
Civil management.
Civil Construction.
Civil Construction Management Incorporated, for the period beginning June 1st, 2019, to end on May 31st, 2020.
Second.
With the monthly rental income of, or a, an annual total of...
Yeah, the annual total would be $10,200.
All right, and Jim seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Next item, Comcast franchise fee memo to the bookkeeper. This is just authorized...
Quarterly letter.
Yeah.
I want the board to be aware, because it is a big chunk of money.
So it is something for the board to sign, but we received the cable franchise fee dated May 1st, an amount of $23,281.14 for January, February, March of 2019, which is 5% of the total revenue received of $465,621.97. Of this amount, $2,328.11 goes to the Cable Revolving Fund, and $20,953 stays with the Town of Newton.
We can't choose that money.
Right.
Next, yeah.
So we need a motion to sign the letter to the bookkeeper, authorizing preparing a check in the amount of $2,328.11.
Moves to authorize the bookkeeper to make those check payments.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, that's done. 2018 Pay Matrix update? I thought we were done with this.
No, this is just the summary sheet, showing where everybody sits with their grade and step and their hourly amount. We do this once a year, just so that we have a clean slate before we start the next year. So these are all of, as of 5/7 today.
All right, so this is just information purposes, to remind us of where our employees are at.
Correct. So that way, we don't get confused when we start doing pay raises. We know exactly where everybody sits. My question to the board, is this something that people can, I know they can come in and request to look at it, but we're not allowed to give out copies, are we?
Yes, it's a public document. A public employee pays.
But we don't announce their dollar amount when we vote on the pay raises?
It, it's still public information. Even though we don't announce the dollar amount, the Pay Matrix is a public document.
We do the total amount in the town report every year of what everybody gets paid.
We, we also do announce their grade and step, which is on the Pay Matrix. For those who are interested, do have the public information to be able to take the grade step that they were hired or promoted to, look at the matrix, and find out what that dollar amount is.
So giving copies is okay?
Yeah.
Just wanted to be sure.
Yep. All right, so there's our information. Anybody have any questions on this matrix, the annual report?
Not, not on the report, but I do have a question after when you're ready to, before you go off this topic.
Yeah, my, my only comment is, in the future, it's not the 2018 Pay, Pay Matrix update. It's the 2018 Employee Summary. The Pay Matrix is that document with all the numbers going across it. This is the Employee Summary.
Okay, I can change it.
So just renaming it so that it doesn't get confused with the other document?
Sure, sure.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Any other comment? All right, Diane?
So I was thinking about this, and when Nancy brought the Pay, Pay Matrix up, I think it would be, be you to start doing evaluations sooner than later. So when it comes time for budgeting, the people know what they want to do. My suggestion would be that you have them into you by sometime in July, and then you take August to review them, and September, and then by then, they could have their budgets going with any increases that need to be done. So just take that, it's up to you what you want to do, but it's just a suggestion.
So the, I, I like that suggestion. The only thing for this year, I, I would think we'd have a mutiny on our hands if we asked for people to do reviews that soon, because they, they probably feel like they just did them two weeks ago. So we need to come up with some sort of a, a way to...
Wean them in.
Well, not wean them in, but maybe if, if we had a, we need to think on it more, but there should be some way of, of kind of transitioning this year with, without too much pain and suffering on the, on, for our department heads, and then picking it up on schedule in 2020 to do August and September.
I like that, yeah.
Yeah.
Last year, the idea was that we would have them, I believe, by September 1st.
September 1st and September 14th.
And we were still doing them in January.
Yeah, exactly.
Hence why I'm trying to get it...
Quite honestly, what we have to do, the September 1st date actually works, provided we look at people and go, you know, you're an administrator of a department, or you are supposed to be supplying us with documents. If we do not have evaluations in our hand on September 1st, your evaluation is going to show that. We did. Last year, we, we acted like a bunch of little puppies, going, "Oh, Giddy, we got something," and we're thrilled.
I wouldn't go that far, Jim.
Maybe not puppies.
Yeah, kittens. But when, in January, when we were still looking at stuff going, and there, I believe, there's at least one set that we never received.
Correct.
And we need to be able to look at people and go, "No, we're not kidding."
So, so our whole thing is, we get into the budget season, and we're doing those, and we're doing budgets, and we can't finish the budgets, because we don't have those.
Exactly.
It's a nightmare, and last year was terrible.
So this year, you want to back it up to August? August 1st, the evaluations will be completed?
Yeah, I think, I, I would agree with that date. I just think we need to figure out something, something that meets the requirements that we really owe our employees, to make sure the, the evaluations are done and done correctly. But at the same time, I think with less than a year of revisiting some of these, we don't have to go through the entire process.
Because we just finished them up like in December.
We...
To start over is just gonna be a nightmare.
I'm the new person. What's the procedure been prior, that it's on the calendar, that evaluations are done when?
At, at one point, they were done on the anniversary of employment, so you had them all, any...
They were scattered.
Right. We, we decided to make September 1st the drop dead date, with the evaluations to be completed by November 1st by us, so that everything could be budgeted for, for the following year.
And do people get reminders, like our BOS meetings and...
Yes, and our HR person has sent out many, many emails requesting that they get turned in to ours.
Well, you look at, one of the departments has probably 25 people, so that's a lot of people. And they're also supposed to show it to the board before they show it to the employee.
Right.
Then they have to go back to the employee, which I'm still waiting on some of them from last year.
Yeah.
And pay rate sheets, getting those ready. If they do get a pay increase, we're getting, we're having trouble getting people to sign the pay rate sheet. So it's, it's really messing up the bookkeeper and me, and, you know, these are things that are required by the auditors, and it's...
So if, if we don't have a signed pay rate sheet, there's no pay increase awarded.
Yeah, but you can't punish the, well, I guess in that case you could, but...
Well, yeah, we, what we need to do is, we need to start giving some teeth to things.
Well, I think if the board's voting effective this date, you know, it's kind of hard to say, well, we're not gonna pay you this date. Well, I think if the board's voting effective this date, you know, it's kind of hard to say, well, we're not going to pay you this date, because you didn't, and, you know...
Right, it could be effective upon signing the new payroll sheet, yeah.
Yeah.
And actually, since I'm the person who usually makes the motion to give people pay raises, my motion in the future will include that it's predicated on their having signed their pay rate sheets.
I mean, I would like to see it all happen in one month, so that we're not dragging it on and going back and forth with the board. I don't know how many times we brought it in front of the board and had to wait, and we brought it back in front of the board. It's a nightmare. And, you know, I keep shifting files, these are signed, these aren't signed.
Well, that's the other thing, is we need to dedicate the time to actually do them, because we can't push, we did have things keep coming up that, you know, were more of a fire and kind of pushed the evaluations back.
That's why maybe if we back it up a month to the beginning of August...
We'll have different fires.
But I think it needs to be opposite of a selection.
I'm just saying, we need to make it a higher priority for the board.
I know, but one of the problems that we had once we, when we did the September date, is stuff came in in September, we said that we were going to start in October, and little fires kept cropping up, and then we were in budget season.
Yeah, and that's hard.
September 1st, if we say, okay, starting in September, those two meetings are going to be dedicated, there's no budget season. You know, we're not in budget season yet. We're at the end of certain things. There shouldn't be that many fires, and if there are fires, we need to put them out. It just means that we have to put the extra time in.
Well, I think if you could do the evaluations like every other week or something, just evaluations.
Well, I was just going to say, and, you know...
All right, and let's step back for a moment, okay? So we were talking about the employee summary pay sheet, which is in preparation for. Then we went to perhaps starting the evaluations a month early. Now we're talking about doing the evaluations, so we're getting off topic. Let's just step back a little bit.
Okay, I'll do it officially. I will move that we change the...
Can I ask, just a suggestion? Just something I was just thinking of that might help. What if, when they turn in their budget, if any employee is going to have a raise, the evaluation has to be with the budget?
We're going to get our budget after the fact. But yes, if their budget includes a pay raise, then we must have the employee evaluation and pay sheet on file. So not necessarily with the budget, but we must have it on file.
Yeah, but I think Matt always said, everybody should have an evaluation every year.
Yeah, I mean, we can't, we can't get into the habit of, you know...
Yeah, all right. I didn't know if that would make it easier or not.
It would for budgeting, yeah.
The, I mean, really, I think we kind of have agreed on the date range. I think that's the easy part. I think the other part is, I'm picturing like a summary update for evaluations at this point. They don't have to do the whole evaluation, but here's a paragraph update. You know, I'm asking for a raise for this person because of...
Well, actually, the cover sheet is all the way.
Yeah, yeah.
I really don't want to be sitting there going, you know... The evaluation is based on a supervisory interpretation of a document.
Tell you what, let's put discussing revising the evaluation process on the next meeting where we actually have time to do so.
I like it.
I second that.
So we'll put it on the next meeting, and then we can discuss it a little more thoroughly.
Okay.
Thank you. We just seem to be spending a lot of time on a summary of where people are. Next, request to use metal detector on Marshall property.
Yes.
Probably, Diane put this on this year, I saw it, the letter. The Historical Society has a couple of people who would like to go around with the detector outside, maybe dig a little hole and plug it if they're looking for things that people might have lost years and years ago.
And are they going to be supervised when they're...
They're adult people, are they members?
Members of the society.
They're life members of the Historical Society.
So anything they find is going to be...
Going to the Historical Society, yes.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. I wanted to make sure we weren't authorizing, you know, residents or someone to go on there, you know, go scavenging and, you know, get rich off of the town.
I didn't have a problem with it, but I thought the board should have some input. I don't think we need certificates of insurance, however. Bill Landry, who's the president of the Historical, has offered to do a waiver, have them sign a waiver. They twist an ankle, we're not liable.
I like that idea.
Yeah.
And just some language that, they say they're going to display...
You don't like the waiver idea?
Who's writing the waiver?
I think Bill has some waivers that he's put through Primax.
Yeah, he puts them all through Primax.
As long as it's Primax.
Yep, the attorney, not the HR person.
Yeah, remember, Bill is also the chair of the Joint Loss Committee.
That's true, that's true.
Yeah. And then I'd like to see, we just give permission, as long as it's clear that it's to be displayed and belongs to the building and the museum?
Yeah, and that's what, and that's what Bill said.
And that's what the actual request states.
Provided the roof doesn't leak.
Oh, gosh, the old roof.
And who knows, we could end up...
Well, maybe they'll find something so great they can...
All right, I don't think we need a motion to authorize the Historical Society members.
Great idea.
Use a metal detector at a historical site that's... Because the Historical Society actually caretakers, if you will, of the Marshall property, are they not?
Correct.
Yeah. So, I mean, I don't really see us needing to make any motions or anything.
Okay.
Just wanted to make sure you're all aware.
I mean, they could be digging holes to plant a flower, for all we know.
And hopefully, they'll also find a hoard of nice, like, colonial silver.
All right, so our next item, so yes, they can move forward as they described in their email.
Okay.
Next is the review code enforcement officer, building inspector job description. You got it in email.
Madam Chair, I would move to adopt the job description for the building inspector code enforcement officer, and it needs to be in that order on the job description as presented.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All right.
Yeah, there's a big parenthetical in the middle of there, Diane, you can delete.
Any discussion?
So it's building inspector slash code enforcement officer?
Yes.
Right.
Okay.
And for those who don't know, we did take an existing working model and then adapted it to our particular needs. So with no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's our official job description. And...
Madam Chair, per RSA 31:95-B, to accept and expend unanticipated funds to the Newton Food Pantry from the Newton Historical Society in the amount of $36. I move.
Okay, that was a motion.
I second the motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so now we are on to other business, so I'm going to let you.
How do I write, read this appropriately?
I move to...
Thank you, I'm new, guys. I move to sign the vendor manifest dated May 7th, 2019 in the amount of $149,741.32.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion to sign the veteran's tax credit for MAP 13-3-11-90 for the tax year 2019.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion to sign the appointment for James Ryan for deputy forest fire warden per recommendation from Forest Fire Warden Ingalls.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 It's, that's it.
And...
I'll sign it, and then I'll pass it on.
There may be, yeah. Anything else? Approval amendment, no, proclamation. We have this announcement, I can do this one.
Okay.
This is for our wonderful tax collector slash town clerk. There is a 50-years anniversary celebration of Municipal Clerks Week, May 5th through 11th, 2019. Whereas the office of the municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, whereas municipal clerks continually serve to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, county, and professional organizations. Whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk. Now, therefore, we, the Board of Selectmen of Town of Newton, do recognize the week of May 5th through May 11th, 2019 as Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation to our municipal clerk, Mary Jo McCullough, and to all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. I would move that we actually sign this letter to make it official. Seconded by Jim. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mary Jo.
Thank you, Mary Jo, and Cheryl, you guys do a great job.
Does this help with our taxes?
No, no, it's just, it's a statewide show of support for all that they do.
I know.
Okay.
I'm just trying to be funny.
Madam Chair, I would move that we approve the public and non-public minutes dated April 16th, 2019.
I second the motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the public and non-public minutes dated April 25th, 2019.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Madam Chair, I move that we approve the public and non-public minutes dated April 29th, 2019.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is that all of them? That is all of them.
It only takes three, so the chair can sign it.
One, two, three. All right, and...
Madam Chair, I move that we not unseal the minutes at this time.
I don't think we need a motion for that, but...
That's what I, I didn't...
So we see no need to unseal minutes at this time, is that... And if anybody else disagreed? Actually, we need to sign that.
In which case...
Then, in that case, I have no other items, I would be...
Madam Chair, I move to adjourn.
We will adjourn at 8:55 PM. Thank you very much.